... Please sign in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with the following amendments. Additional certi- [unintelligible]. Remove item two, accounts payable, and I, accounts payable, to be from the original agenda.
There's a motion to approve the agenda with amendments. Is there a second? Second, sent by Gloria. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any correspondence or comments?
Well, before we start the election, I would like to thank all of you for the privilege of serving as president this year. It's been an honor and we've done a lot of great things this year and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve this. Thank you very much. And with that, I will declare the nominations for the Office of Board of Education presidents open. Are there any nominations?
Gloria, Madam President, I'd like to nominate Jean. Is there a second?
Second.
Second item. Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations? So moved second.
So.
All those in favor of closing nominations, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. All those in favor of Jean Clifford being named president for the Board of Education, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
[laughing].
I have a question.
Yes.
What happens if the nomination closes but the election continues?
Uh, if we reopen nominations. You come to the meeting on time? No.[134.69][134.69][laughing].
Okay, nominations for the Office of Vice President are in order. Madam President, I'd like to nominate Tim Coors for Vice Chair, Vice President. Is there a second? Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to the nomination cease? So moved. Is there a second? All those in favor of Tim as Vice President, please raise your hand. Congratulations.
A long winter.[174.84][174.84][laughing].
At this point, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve consent agenda item, agenda item E.1 through five, T.
Second, is there a second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. And we move to unfinished business and school funding.
I don't have a formal presentation for you tonight. I just wanted to give you an update on where we were at as far as the budget situation. As most of you know, on the 24th legislative session, regrouped and they came up with a finance equity plan that the court approved. That does mean that we will receive some additional funding in Garden City, which is always a welcome treat for us. What that does enable us to do is hopefully balance the budget for next year without having to make any cost reductions. We've had to do that kind of somewhat painfully over the past couple of years. I believe that we'll be able to balance the budget and not have to make any cuts for this year. We've kind of looked at the budget the last couple of sessions that we've had and the dollars that it's going to take to maintain the salary schedule and some of the additional items that we have in expenses as compared to last year. These additional funds should help us do that. So I will have the budget prepared for you at the next meeting and we'll be able to repeat that then. But at this point, we're moving forward and we're in pretty good shape and it ended up probably as best as we could have hoped for in Garden City.
Any questions?
But we're still far from the 100 percent that we were at, say, five, six years ago. We're only right, we're only fully funded.
Absolutely. If you look just back at the last couple of years, you know, we talked about the, I mentioned the drastic cuts we had to do over the last couple of years. At the end of fiscal year '15, we saw a mid-year cut of about $700,000. That $700,000 reduction level was then frozen when we went into the block grants. So initially, right off the bat, in the last two years, I see $1.4 million that we did not receive, that we would have been entitled to under the equity formula. In fact, we would have been entitled to more than 1.4 because we have slid down, or whichever way you want to look at it, in the assessed valuation scale. We've moved from, let's see, I believe it was 226 down to 248. So our assessed valuation has decreased, which would allow us to receive additional funding and we missed out on that because the equity formula wasn't being fully funded under the block grant.
The other thing that wasn't funded, there was increases in, there were increases in our [unintelligible]. Important for people to realize that while we're very excited that this was resolved without the shutdown, this really resolved the equity portion of the issue. The adequacy part has now been set for arguments. That's equally as important. Both those are critically important to our decision, both equity and adequacy. And so that's allowing us to move ahead and prepare for the start of school next year without the shutdown looming over us. But we're far from having school funding completely resolved in Kansas. There's a lot of work to be done down there and certainly some important decisions that will be made by the legislature next year and that will have a profound impact on Garden City. Those of you who have been on the board for six years realize that property taxes have gone up considerably in the last six years and almost completely due to the fact that the state hasn't been providing the dollars that they should have been feeding into the formula and that's put a greater burden on our local property tax payer.
Talking about the legislature for next year, am I remembering correctly, is tomorrow the last date I'm going to be able to register to vote? If you want to vote, it'll be August 2nd, right?
July 12th is the deadline for people to register to vote, to participate in the [unintelligible].
You can go to the Secretary of State website and do that online, right?
You can do that online or you can do that at the county clerk's office, whatever works for that.
It will have us leaving it.[480.62][480.62][laughing]. Thank you.
You have to have that website.[485.02][485.02][laughing].
KMSOS.org. It's one I frequent a lot in my business.
Next question, follow-up question. On the stability, although a decision's been made for this school year, what's the possibility? You know, I've kind of lost faith in the system right now. I mean, are we confident that we'll have that money for a whole school year or where are we at with that? Either you can answer that. You like it or you can fund it. I don't care.
In my opinion, I think that it's very plausible that we would have a reduction next year. I don't, if their funding continues to not meet expectations, I don't know how they're going to be able to fund us until they've said they're going to.
In year or next year?
I am actually going to plan for a mid-year cut. I mean, I think we need to budget and plan accordingly so that we are ready and able to continue with what we need to do and have reserves on hand to be able to continue and move forward if we were to get a mid-year cut. But I, I foresee maybe it's very possible that we would have one. And that's a different philosophy from what I, we've, in years we've served here, we've been on here probably the longest, I believe, and we've never talked about having reserves. We just feel like that's not the way we wanted to run this business. And so I think it's important that we start communicating that because that not only, you know, cements the fact that we don't have, we don't trust our legislators right now, we don't trust the system, but that's the last thing that taxpayers want is for a school district to have money in the bank. I mean, we need to have money in our taxpayers' pockets or in the classroom right away. We don't need to be holding it just in case. So I think it's a different philosophy from what we've experienced in the last eight years and one that I'm hopeful that we will get away from in the near future. But I'm glad that we're being diligent with our budget and that we're planning for worst-case scenario for a robust, profitable business.
I think our first obligation is to the students and so I think [unintelligible] is very important because we have to be able to serve them and that's what it takes to make sure that we can do that. That's what we need to do. We need to be conservative and make sure that we can do that.
But I mean, do you agree that this is the first time we've ever really talked about having reserves like that? I mean, even with our audits, you know, we've been, our audit reviews, it's been, we've had enough reserves not even to cover a lot of payroll. And to have a completely different philosophy change is...
Our balances, our reserves have always been, I think, what I would consider to be fiscally conservative but appropriate. But since 2010, 2009, I think the public schools in Kansas have had three mid-year cuts prior to that that had never happened before. So one of the conversations that KJ and I have had is along the lines of, we, in order to be responsible, we need to make sure that the landscape is different and we need to make sure that we are prepared in case that would happen. The state continues to miss their revenue estimates month after month. They've lowered those estimates every October or every November and every April when they release those and they still miss. And while, you know, we certainly hope that K-12 doesn't receive a cut, we feel the responsible thing to do is to bring to the budget that is prepared to deal with that. That's what our intention. I want to throw one other thing in there too. KJ is doing a phenomenal job. It's really nice when she gets her budget forms about the first of July and can really start to budget together. But as you can imagine, when the law isn't even finalized until the last week of June, the State Department has to get that information translated into the forms. I don't even know if it's Friday or Monday yet.
We don't know what happened yet.
We're hoping there's a meeting here Friday, the State Department puts on, to kind of start going over that. So it's really putting her behind the eight ball and it's understandable. But she, I just want you to know, she's working very hard to get all that put together and meet the timeline that we need to meet for our budget numbers.
Can you name ideas, chocolate, attacking, or...
I appreciate the update. I just think that when we all just have to act in an atmosphere of austerity, that there are probably so many ideas and things that our staff would like to do or to try that would make things better for our students. And we kind of look back on some of those things because we know that funding will just not be there. So, you know, having stable funding and having adequate funding is more important. But it's fixed in the next year or so.
Any other questions?
Just to curiosity, what's the strategy if you're planning for the mid-year cut? How do you figure that would happen?
Not knowing what that amount will be is difficult. So it's a combination of trying to find that balance between, kind of as Gloria and Dean both alluded to, how do we make sure that we have sufficient reserves that would allow us to meet payroll needs, meet student needs, but yet not keep too much in our pocket because that's obviously not what we want to do either. So I think that we're looking at different strategies that would allow us to have reserves in the bank within the budgets and placeholders that should we need those funds. And then maybe we look at, at the end of the year, if we haven't needed them, what do we do with them? If we do need them, then at least they're there. But I think we have a couple of different options that we can look at to maybe just postpone some potential expenses so that if they're there, we can...
Any other? Thank you, KJ. Moving on to personnel today.
Are you smiling?
Always smiling.
What's here? The national teacher shortage. Just to be, picture me inserted in this instead. So, national teacher shortage. It's finally in Garden City. We've kind of been talking a little bit about this for the past couple of years and it's here certainly. But it's not just a Garden City or Kansas problem. It's really happening around the nation and we are finally seeing the effects of that. But I just, I have a few points here that I'd like to share with some other states that are going through similar things that we are now seeing. In the state of Indiana, from 2009, 2014, 50% declined in the number of teachers getting their license. During that same period, 18 and a half percent declined the number of licensed teachers. That first stat, what I gathered from this information, it was coming from an article that was in the Washington Post dated a year ago. So this is where teachers are renewing their license. So 50% of teachers in Indiana aren't renewing their license and an additional 18 and a half percent of new teachers aren't getting licenses in that state. In Nevada, at the time of this article, if every teacher candidate was to be offered a position, they still would not have enough in that state to fill their jobs. Clark County, although we needed 2,600 teachers during that time. Oklahoma, trying some new strategies last year, they were recruiting to Puerto Rico and Spain to fill open positions. Arizona, at the time this article was printed, had 1,000 openings to start their school year. California, 74% drop in enrollment in the teacher prep programs over the last 10 years. And this is a little closer to home. This is some information about our state. According to an article published by Kansas Association of School Boards on July 7th, 2015, there were 500 jobs posted at that time, twice as many as usual for that time of the year. The number of teachers leaving the state and retiring had been increasing while teacher prep candidates were declining. In the school year 11, 12, 399 teachers left the state and an additional 1,260 retired. And at the same time, there was 2,126 completers, so kids going into the educational field, completing their degrees. 2014, 15, 654 left the profession and left the state, or left the profession or the state, and additional 2,326 retired. And again, the number of completers down to 1,901. Over the last four years, there's been decline in the number of educational majors. So the numbers I presented earlier on the completers, those are the kids that are actually finishing up the degree, but the number of kids that are picking education as a major over the last 40 years was down by 2,300 students. We contacted 35 universities in Wisconsin. Wisconsin wasn't a place that was on our list to recruit. We had an employee who was going to take vacation, had some family in the area, and he said, "So hey, why don't I get ahold of some universities, why don't I go through there and maybe we can catch some people that don't have jobs?" So he contacted 35 universities. Five of those 35 don't even offer a teacher education program anymore. It was kind of comical. He said what he was doing, what his plans were, he was going to be in the area, so on and so forth, maybe able to provide him some names of some recent graduates that might be, be of some appointment. He said, "We don't do that." He said, "You don't do what? You don't give names? No, we don't do that. We don't even offer a teacher education program." So five of those universities don't even offer one. 2013, 14, Central Michigan University reported that they have decreased 52% in enrollment in the teacher education program. That's been a place that we've recruited highly over the last nine years, as well as Eastern Michigan University with 50% less participants from one year to the next in terms of going to their job pairs. So that leads us to our separations. So this is some trend data that we've had over the last several years of the separations in Garden City. So you can see the totals on the bottom and the breakdown of carryover positions, available positions prior, in prior year, non-renewals, non-renewal and testing licenses. Teacher had one-year non-renewable license, but they didn't pass the practice, as an example, then we not renew them because they're not appropriately licensed. And of course, resignations and retirements. So actually, our number of separations are down from what they've been previous years. We were right at 100 this year, but 14 of those were carryover open positions that we had from last year. So what have we been doing in our recruiting efforts? We talked a little bit about this. We still do what I would consider traditional recruiting. We went to 32 career fairs this year in 19 different states. We also tried some things a little bit out of the box, knowing that this has kind of been coming and we need to do some different things. One of those is our employee incentive program that we've started this year, student-teacher incentive, that's to increase the number of student teachers that we have in the district. We have a pretty high hiring rate for student teachers once we get them here. So you can see what our kids are about, our schools are about, the support that we get to new teachers. We've also really looked at our Grow Your Own program for the high school, focusing on that. Part of the reasons that we see of teachers leaving is certainly ours the other. We hire typically 50% of our folks from a distance, out of state. And so one of the reasons they want to leave is to get closer to family. So by really pushing the Grow Your Own program, yeah, we hope to combat that a little bit by having kids that are used to Southwestern Kansas, grown up here, have ties here, and hopefully choose teaching as a career and then will stay here for long term. Residency program, that's a program that we've worked with Ford State on. K-State is now kind of establishing a similar program to this and it's allowed our classified teachers to, our classified personnel, to go back to school to obtain a teaching degree. And so they can still work and still take classes and it'll give them a pathway to get their credentials for teaching. Transition programs, that's really been a good avenue for us in the past few years. I think we hired 12 in the last two years and we've used both for in-state, that's the primary one, and it really works for people that want to go into education, a bachelor's degree, and they can get certified in there and start teaching while they're taking a pedagogy classes or the art of teaching, learning how to be a teacher. And that program really focuses on our upper levels, our seventh through 12th grades. K-State this year has started a program, M.A.T. program, and it is going to allow us to do the same kinds of things but for elementary certification. And we have three young people right now going through that. The difference between those two programs, one is they can really start teaching right away, as soon as they get into the program, we offer them a job, they can start teaching. The K-State program is, they have a 12-month program and then there are nothing else for them to start teaching. So it's really compressed. Other kind of out-of-the-box things that we're trying, generally speaking, social studies positions and physical education positions are easy to fill. And so there's a lot of kids across the nation who have their certification in those areas that aren't going to find jobs. And so we've been trying to use the resumes that we've collected, using different sources, contacting colleges to find out who these people are and then offer them a job outside their content area. They're certified teachers, but then we're going to help give them support and give them license in appropriate areas where our needs are and simply not in social studies or anything. So we've tried to do some things like that. Use of online job postings. Handshake is one of those. Handshake is a, it's a website this big universities are using now, it's a job posting board. And what makes it nice for us, it's becoming more and more prevalent in the universities, but we will have an account and so we can post our jobs on their university sites to their graduates and their people. And so we've really pushed, pushed that and getting our advertising, if you will, out there for what our needs are. The other one is TeachersTeachers.com. So we've used that for a long time. We're trying to use it a little differently now because of the numbers of openings that we have and the need for teachers that we have. Here, last week, last Friday, as a matter of fact, we blasted out an email to 1,500 email recipients through TeachersTeachers. And of those 1,500, saying, you know, "We need teachers, this is the area that we need", we had two responses, but no thank yous, they've already taken jobs, and not a single application generated from that, from 1,500 emails. And the last one is social media. Just get them with contacts, you know, people that we know, universities, Dr. Allen, K-State's in charge of student placement, field placement, so send him our openings and post it out on his Facebook page, Garden City has openings, gives our contact information. We've done that with several universities as well. This is the hires so far that we have by state. So top line there is Kansas. You can see a couple of years ago, 40 of our hires were from Kansas, last year 39, this year 26. Typically, that number's been about 50/50. So we, that's long trend, I'm just giving you three years here, but our trend has been, typically higher between 50% in-state, 50% out-of-state. But right now, we're at 26 and I think 15 is the number. So the out-of-state people are declining certainly. And one of the biggest areas there, Michigan, you know, we've done really well recruiting Michigan folks, like I said, probably for nine years we've been doing that. As high as many as 30 in one season. So two years ago, it was 14, last year it was 6, this year it's 2. So why is that? Could it be the cloud that we've had over our state and what's happening with funding? And if we're going to have school, you know, you could probably draw some conclusions to that, that Kansas has not been very inviting here over the last several months. But of course, it's speculation. So what now? Alternative options for consideration, these are the things that we are having discussions around or looking towards in order to start our school year. Reaching out to people in the community that still hold a license. So three willing questions for them. Might be retirees that haven't worked, could be people that have a current license or have had a license in the past, maybe have chosen to be stay-at-home moms, left Russian for a short amount of time. Those kinds of things is to reach out, make contact with them and see if they'd be interested in filling a position for us full-time. Another option would be job sharing. So if they can get two of those retirees or two stay-at-home moms and they don't want to be something full-time, they might be interested in going back and working a half-day with somebody else, they might work a week on, week off. We could be pretty flexible on that scheduling. And the last piece is coming back and taking some of those experienced folks that would be good mentors and good cooperating teachers for the student teachers that were getting based on our incentive program. Now, we have 11 elementary student teachers scheduled for the fall. And so finding people that will be their cooperative teacher or we're not taking them out of the classroom and to do this might help. The next line there is student teacher placement. So we're looking at this a little bit differently as well. So if we can get these retirees or people that have licenses to come back and be a cooperative teacher, we'll put the student teachers in those open positions that we have. So basically, it's their classroom, they're getting started with the support of a veteran teacher or a retiree. And really, their goal is to prepare them so at semester time, they'll take it over into the later, be in their class. Utilize the long-term subs, we've done that in the past. This year, our numbers are pretty big, so we will utilize that, but it's a smaller scale. Absorbing some positions, looking at our numbers, I've given two examples here, as possibilities with a special education position as an example. At Alton Brown, we've looked at our numbers, looked at the kids there, and at the time, Dr. Johnson probably could get by without having that teacher in that role and dispersing those kids to other classrooms. Same with an early childhood class, their numbers are even lower at the beginning of the year, they increase as the year goes on. So it wouldn't impact our student numbers per classroom, nothing out of the ordinary with what our board's recommendations are. with what our board's recommendations are, but it might increase the number of classes. The next one, however, increase the class size by potentially one. And that would be us absorbing one position at each other's K-4 grade levels. And that would worth the increase probably over our recommendations of what's set, you know, to do that. But in that bottom example, you can capture five positions there that we might have to fill by increasing class size by one. Potential overloads for specials. This can be, as an example, last year, we have a science position apply now and it was shared with a position at Buzzler Jones. We can only fill a halftime position apply now, not Buzzler Jones job. So those teachers took on an overload to cover their science class, I've got Buzzler Jones because of that. The same could be true this year. Jay Parker's got a three-quarter time science position, so maybe that's one that we pay those teachers to do overloads to cover their science if that was a position they weren't able to fill. So looking at some options there, potential overloads at the elementary level. And then reclassifying current personnel. So looking at our interventional, librarians, literacy coaches perhaps, you know, this would be a last resort, but it may be something that we have to look at and certainly we'd have discussions around what that would, what that would do, what impacts that would have with our intervention programs, requirements for the librarians to teach their skills, those kinds of things. But all those will be topics of discussion as we prepare to start our school year.
That review, that is a pretty, it's almost a verdict as a prospect. On that last item you described, is that a situation where we've got certified teachers coaching, certified teachers in the classroom? And so the concept would be to potentially move those coaches to classrooms?
Could be. So there are certified teachers, interventional librarians, literacy coaches. So if we got to that level, then reclassifying being that we would take them from the interventional role and put them into an open classroom position. If we have a third grade position that we couldn't fill, they would have interventionals and they would move into that teaching role as a third grade teacher.
Dare I say, math coaches as well?
It's certainly up for discussion on what impacts that would have and what decision we have to make about that. And I'll just kind of back up. I know none of these are good ideas. None of these are what we want to do as a district. You spend a lot of time building programs, a lot of time making our intervention program being what it is. And it's probably one of the best in the state, quite honestly. And so in making these kinds of decisions, what impact is that going to have on those programs? It's, they're tough choices, no doubt. And not anything someone's going to raise their hand for, for sure. So that's why if you go back up and you look at the other things that we've done, trying to get people to be certified or teach outside of their content area as a new recruit to the district. You know, going through our cold calls, our resumes that we've done, you know, we've been through all of the resumes and I couldn't even dare to tell you how many there are, but 300-plus resumes. We start early and we do that and we have some success right when we get back from our recruiting, it's probably due to 13th of April or so. The reason for that, in my opinion, is because there's a lot of other school districts that need to open jobs or post jobs at that time. So we get some kids into our system during that time. Then other districts start opening and they slow down. But we're still trying to do these kind of out-of-the-box things to get the kids to come. And once we get them here, I think, and we have a good chance of getting them here, keeping them here, signing, we have lots of support for people to come. But we're doing all of these other things so that we don't have to get to this as a last year.
Another question, you've got absorbing some positions. If we can't hire more bodies, the absorbing the positions helps our budget, but it keeps that fewer more bodies.
Sure, and I'll, I'll say it. This isn't a budget issue. This is a manpower issue. Us being able to fill the position, we're not making cuts, any of these, absorbing of one position from kindergarten through fourth grade. So one in kindergarten, one in first, one in second. That's not a budget issue. It's not to cut a position to save money. It's that we don't have the people to fill those slots. So we would be absorbing if we had, if we had some space as an example in the third grade, let's say. If we have a lot of open seats, the overhead isn't as high as maybe it has been in the past, we could absorb a third grade position, close that position down. Again, not for budget purposes, because we can't fill it. And if there is a teacher in that slot, we can take them from that third grade spot and we'll put them into the kindergarten spot that might be open, that's going unfilled. And there's a need for that based on the students and the seats. So none of it is based on budget, it's simply a matter of trying to get the people to fill
Does that answer your question? It does, and I didn't quite follow your explanation, but the bottom line is finding people to fill the positions. If you can't fill the position, then you've got to restructure.
Right.
And so one more child per classroom on average means that it's coming from a position ultimately that you can't seem to fill.
Perhaps. So again, it's all kind of got to work out with the number of teachers in that section. But as an example, if we have all our third grade positions filled in the district, but we have kindergarten positions that aren't filled and we can capture one of those third grade positions based on students in the seats, we can take one of those third grade people, the body, and we look up to a kindergarten position. And we can still handle all the enrollment in third grade with those number of teachers and that one third grade teacher becoming a kindergarten teacher would allow us to then handle the number of kids in kindergarten and in that seat. So again, it's just to, it's just to try to capture some positions that we wouldn't have to fill, we could just basically really charlie and shut things around. And the impact would be potentially one student per section, per classroom. And it's also going to put the string on Charlie for transportation because potentially we'll be transporting more kids because it's not the order.
Force transfer.
Other questions?
However, reaching out to the community, how are you doing there?
So we took, we went back through and I think since 2012, I got a list of all of our retirees that we've had. I generated a list since 2012 of our retirees. Went through and it was basically, are they still in the community, are they still around? We narrowed that list down, there's maybe 30 people. We've had discussions with principals, who else might be good fit because some people that have left, like the stay-at-home moms, they're not going to be on the retiree list. So we generated a list of about 30, 35 people and we'll talk to them, bill the principals, we'll have them get in contact and see if any of these folks are going south.
Have we done anything to work with the community college?
In terms of?
I, in the past, like I was an academic counselor, so I know like a ton of students who come through, you know, and identify major, like not, are we working with them in any ways or kind of tied to them or?
We haven't specifically for education, that might be attached with our grow your own program. And certainly something we can do is to give their counselors and career advisors and have them stay in the direction. And again, we'll have a nice pathway lined out for them, what that would look like, starting from high school or two-year degree, what's the next step? We've got a relationship with, we, as an example, 4A State's got a program too, so we can really lay it out for them, what that would look like. And certainly our opportunities where maybe they want to stay at town, maybe want to work, work as a classified person, so they can work as a para, while they're finishing up their degree and do that. We have some of those pieces of children along, but nothing, nothing.
Just a comment, I think it's important that we at least spend a moment talking about retention because that is such a key point in lessening the burden that you're talking about. And I think that this district does a good job with retention. It probably always do better, but I know that that's important to this administration and Dr. Carlin. And I think that's why when you showed our numbers over the last few years, it seems like we're ahead of what's happening nationally. And I think hopefully it's because we're doing right by the employees that we have.
Sure. You know, retention is going to be something that's going to be, that I will take on next year with a little more importance, I guess you could say. So my, my plan for next year will be to establish a committee that focuses on retention and then do some focus groups. I don't know if I talked about it last time or not, but looking at maybe three different segments of our employees, those first-year teachers that are just completing, you know, what have we done well? What are the things that we can do better to make your experience here in front of city better? Maybe that's even something from our, you know, very beginning with our personnel office and contact, our process, you know, being supportive of them, those kinds of things. And then, and then moving on, maybe the three-to-five-year group, people that have been here that amount of time, again, what have we done well? What would you like us to do better? What's kept you there for five years? And then looking at, you know, 10 to 15, and then maybe some veteran, veteran teachers that have been here a long time. And then asking them the same questions, you know, what's important to you to, that's kept you in Garden City or the community, or somebody else now coming into the workforce that you're better to love. So we'll have some focus groups to kind of address those different areas and then we'll start, you know, trying to look at our practices and we'll continue to, because you're right, if we can, if we can lower the number of separations that we have, that makes it better for certain. And in addition...